Call the meeting of the City Planning Commission to order on Monday, November 25th, 2019, and we'll start off with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Senior Planner Dennis. Madam Secretary, would you call the roll?
Please let the record show that all planning commissioners are present.
The minutes of the last meeting, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, make one change on the minutes.
Alright.
That would be to page three in relation to the motion. It's noted as 302, it should be 311 with... Yeah, so the As and Noes are represented properly, it's just the numbers are off.
Yup.
With that, I would make a motion that we approve with those changes.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, the minutes be approved with the one change. Is there... please vote. We have one abstention. Commissioner McCann was not at the last meeting. Public comments. Anyone wishing to address the commission for an item that's not on the agenda may do so at this time. And at this time, I'll call up Hoyanip.
I'm always very happy to be here. It's always good. So tonight, I'd like to address why I have not been here more often. Basically, I'm just making my round at the city. I hope we could be more inclusive, community engagement. The short word is transparency. I have two points. One is more detailed minutes. The second point is more detailed meeting notification. So I assume you have the copies of the minutes of a meeting I attended elsewhere. So actually, when I look back in the old minutes in the city's website, they used to be as detailed as the ones you got here. I don't know what happened, but I think it's always good to have enough details that when people were not here, they missed a meeting and they still get a pretty good idea of what happened. Short minutes, I think, is trouble in the making. Somewhere down the road, someone who didn't participate in the discussion, not the decision, probably want to reset the whole thing and bring a group of people here to do it, right? So that's one downside. Another one is the meeting notifications. I do get those, and they just have the public hearing links. And I'm quick to delete those because I'm not following the cases. But I'm not thoughtful enough to go to the city's website to look up the agenda. I mean, imagine other people in the city. So I think that if we could throw the link of the agenda in like how city council does it, that would be more inclusive, get more community engagement. The reason I'm bringing this up now, two reasons. One is that I actually don't think the city deserves the perception the city has out there. Well, so that just means we have a little bit fine tuning we need to do to get the credit the city deserves. Second is that, in my mind, is the upcoming general plan update. And I believe some of you will be deeply involved in that. I am involved in that at Newport. So I wanted to tell you how costly that is. It's not by choice. There are different kinds of community events, outreach workshops, things like that. The cheapest rate per second is over a dollar. Can we afford any rediscussion at that rate? Thank you.
Chairman Donner?
Yes.
Would it be appropriate to respond to a comment raised by her?
Yeah, you can respond.
Okay. I appreciate your coming and bringing those to, if I may, to our attention. I'd just like to point out that regarding more descriptive minutes, they used to be more descriptive, and a decision was made to kind of truncate that and kind of just the facts, ma'am. But the planning commission meetings are available on YouTube, so you don't have to see, read just the minutes. You can hear word for word everything that was said. So I wanted to make sure you were aware that that was available to the public. Thank you.
Alright, the next item on our agenda is the consent calendar. Nothing on the consent calendar. And the public hearing, we'll start with item two.
Mr. Chair, I need to recuse myself due to the location of my residence. My primary residence is within the radius restriction.
Thank you. Item two, the tentative parcel map, TPM 190003, conditional use permit, CUP 190005, site development permit, SDP 190014, and administrative modification of standards AMS 190005 to allow a condominium conversion for three detached units and the addition of uncovered parking with a reduced setback and the reduction of required setbacks for the expanded garages in the residential multiple-family 14, RMF 14, zoning district at 33950 and 335952, Copper Lantern Street and 33961 Marina Drive. We have a staff report.
Good evening, Chair Donner and planning commissioners. My name is John Champ. I'm the case planner for the Copper Lantern Condominiums. As discussed, it's a request for a tentative map, conditionally used permit, site development permit, and administrative modifications of the standards. Subject property is located at the corner of Mariana Drive and Copper Lantern within the Lantern Community. The property is a 7,882 square foot lot and is improved with three existing detached residential units. Just to give you a little background on this property, it has been developed over the course of approximately 10 to 15 years during the 1950s and 60s, with each unit developed individually over the course of that time while under one ownership. A number of entitlements have been issued to the property over the course of those developments, including a variance to Unit A for a reduced setback for the carport along the north property line to 7.3 feet. Unit B was related to the construction of Unit B. A lotline adjustment was later approved back in 1979 to reroute the property or the property line around the structure as it was incorrectly placed over the property line and in the city or county right-of-way at that point in time. Unit B did receive a variance for a reduced exterior side yard setback along Copper Lantern to 7.5 feet. So this is over the course of a few decades during the 1950s and 60s while under the county of Orange jurisdiction. During that period of time, the development standards were different from where they are today, which has resulted in a number of non-conformities associated with the property. Proposed project scope before you today, in addition to the condominium conversion, is to enlarge the existing garages for all of the units to provide the minimum interior dimension of 10 feet wide by 20 feet deep per parking stall, as well as provide additional uncovered parking along Mariana Drive. It would also relocate the garage for Unit C to improve the building separation from Unit A. Unit B would eliminate a portion of the deck that is currently located within the city right-of-way, as well as landscape and facade improvements to the property. These are the existing photos of the structures. As you can see here, this is pretty typical of the 1950s and 60s of, you know, beach cottage-type design. And as previously stated, they were all developed at different times and are proposed for some facade enhancements, which we will show you here shortly. This is a general overview site plan illustrating the property line along with the different units that are located within the property. As you can see here, in yellow are some of the non-conforming setbacks associated with the property, which we'll illustrate in more detail on the site plan. Gives you the context in terms of the different units and their proximity here. Unit A and Unit C currently have a three-foot separation where, per code, right now, a 10-foot separation is required. This is the existing site plan along with some of the proposed improvements to the property. As you can see here in red are the proposed garage expansions to all three of the structures to provide the minimum required parking for the garage spaces. However, additional parking will be, uncovered parking will be provided onsite as well, which staff will discuss later in the presentation. The table identifies the project's conformance or non-conformities associated with the property as a result of when the structures were built. The project does conform to the required density requirements, given that the units will be exceeding the minimum lot area per unit. Some of the non-conformities are associated with the setback along Mariana Drive for Unit B that was constructed at one point in time over the property line and has since been rerouted, which provides a two-foot and 7.2... or I'm sorry, 1.7-foot setback. An update to the plan is related to bringing in the conformance as related to the parking, which, as you can see here, is required, is three uncovered and three covered. And what's being provided is five covered parking spaces and two uncovered parking spaces. As you can see here, this is a detailed description of the parking spaces per unit, which is resulting in a surplus of one parking stall. The request for the tentative parcel map for a condominium conversion requires not only the tentative parcel map, but a conditionally used permit for the condominium conversion. Some of the key components associated with the requirement to support that is that where possible, the economy, the conversion shall be designed to comply with all of the applicable development standards. It does not require full compliance with all the applicable development standards, which should be noted, high-quality design and construction, as well as privacy between the units and separate utilities. The slide here illustrates the proposed facade enhancements to the structures. While it doesn't dramatically change the aesthetics of the structures, it's intended to be an enhancement to maintain the character of these structures, which does contribute to the character and site and design of the property, given that these are all detached structures, which is unique to see in this area of townware for three units on a lot of this size. So staff is supportive of the proposed design enhancements proposed. The project's also proposing some landscape enhancements to the site. As you can see here, this is a landscape design that's been provided by the applicant's landscape architect, which would result in some landscape improvements, not only to the subject property, but also into the right-of-way in front of the units, as well as in the right-of-way section that is at the intersection of Mariana Drive and Copper Lantern. The site development permit is requested for two components of the project. One is to reduce the setback for the new proposed uncovered parking, as you can see here in green, which would be accessed off of Mariana Drive. It would provide the required dimensions necessary, as well as result in a surplus of one parking space for the project. It's also proposed for the relocation of the garage for Unit C, which would be essentially relocating it closer towards the Mariana Drive, but still providing a 20-foot front yard setback to the property line, which is required per code. So it's pushing that garage as close forward as possible to improve the separation distance between Unit C and Unit A while still providing that minimum 20-foot setback. The site development permit is required for the relocation of that garage, given that Unit C is legal non-conforming. However, the proposed improvements are conforming to the required standard for the relocation of the garage. An administrative modification of the standards is requested for two components. One is to allow for the reduced structure separation between Unit C and Unit A, as previously discussed. As you can see here in green is the existing location of the garage, located three feet from, between structures, and it would be improving that condition to eight feet. In addition to this, the existing five-foot-two setback for Unit B along Copper Lantern would be extended for the expansion of the garage, which is necessary to provide the minimum interior dimension for the two proposed garage spaces within there. Currently, it's substandard, and this would bring it up into conformance. Staff's position is that the project does comply with the required findings and intent of the city's Dana Point zoning ordinance, as well as general plan, and complies with the necessary findings identified within the zoning ordinance. Staff's available for any questions that you may have, as well as the applicant. That concludes staff's presentation.
Now I'll open it up for questions to the staff from the commission.
Good evening, John. I have two fairly simple questions, I think. Can you go back to the parking diagram that you had?
The table?
Well, the table, but actually, go, I think it's a couple pages back where you showed the location of the new garage. And I think it's part of the site development permit.
Oh, okay.
So for the site development permit, you were saying they're adding... This one. So they're doing the new parking stall or the one exposed space? How does that tie into the lots? Is that on one of, for use by one of the particular residences? Or is it a shared that's going to be part of the CCNRs on how those spaces, the outdoor spaces are utilized?
So, per the parking standards, one of the stalls will be required for Unit C, which is immediately adjacent to and accessed off of Mariana Drive there with the new garage. And then the other one will be the guest parking space that's required per code. So that one will be, remain available.
So to be shared amongst the three units and be however it's utilized within their CCNRs or something?
Correct, yeah, and that will be articulated in the CCNRs as well.
And then the second question, just confirming, the separation between the garage for C and then Unit A is eight feet, correct?
That's correct.
Because on page 10, under the AMS, it says six feet. At the very bottom of the page, like the fourth sentence from the bottom, it just says a separation from 10 to 6. But every place else has been saying eight, so just confirming it's eight.
You're correct. That was a misscaling on my part.
Okay.
And I was able to confirm with the architect with the updated plans that are before you, and it is providing eight feet.
Alright, thank you very much, John.
Mr. Murphy, do you have any questions? Mr. McCann?
Thank you, John. What size did you say is required internal to a garage?
Per stall is 10 feet wide by 20 feet deep.
Okay, so between Unit A and Unit C, you're saying that there's eight feet of space?
Correct.
Correct. So on page A6, it shows that they're enlarging the garage to make it 21 feet 6 inches... ...deep. So I'm wondering, if eight feet is substandard, why don't we just have that go back to 20 feet and make it nine and a half feet per building to get it as close as possible to the code?
I think that's a very valid point. We can discuss that with the applicant if that's something they would be willing to entertain. But I think staff would be supportive of that to address one additional non-conformity associated with the project.
Okay, for that matter, in looking at it, they could build that extra six inches forward, it looks like, instead of to the rear, and then have the 10-foot separation required.
It may result, let's see, I'm just doing some quick math here. So it would result, that would result in, let's see, from the back of the wall to the front of the wall. I think presently, let me check. Presently, it's 19 feet 3 inches. So it would need to be expanded at the very least seven, seven inches.
Or nine inches.
I'm sorry, yes, nine inches. So if that's something that the applicant is amenable to, I think if we can address the separation requirement, that would be something that staff would be supportive of.
Okay. Is there any... was there any kind of a fencing plan? I see on the conceptual landscape plan, there's some fencing shown, but is it going to be kind of fenced as if it's three separate parcels? Or no, is most of the space going to be kind of common free-flowing space and no really fenced yards?
I think that there is a fence between Unit C and A, if I'm correct. And then there may be an additional fence between, that would back up to the garage expansion for Unit B. So between Unit B and A, I believe that there is another fence that's proposed there. So there would be some fencing associated with those proposed improvements.
Okay, that's not really clear on the plan. Okay, I was looking at the wrong plan. On the tentative map, there's at least four different easements that I can find that are called out. It's extremely unclear where these are, and there's no discussion of what those easements are for or all about or to who. Or can you enlighten us at all on that?
Yes, I need to take a quick look at the title report, but if my recollection is correct, and maybe the applicant can assist me with this, is I believe some of them are related to overhead utilities that exist at the property in connection to other properties. And there aren't any underground utilities like a storm drain utility or anything like that that would limit or restrict any kind of buildable area. It's primarily the utilities above the overhead utilities is what they're associated with. But I'll double-check in the title report.
Okay, thanks. Would you normally expect to have like a condo plan or airspace exhibit of any kind at this point, or does that come later?
Given that they are proposing some building modifications in the, for the later submittal during the final map review, that's when that would get formalized, given that those improvements aren't necessarily in place now.
Okay. Is the city requesting installation of any public sidewalk or any public right-of-way improvements with this project?
There was some discussion regarding that. However, let's see here. Given the limited scope of the actual improvements to the site, no sidewalks were proposed. However, staff did, was supportive and encouraging of the applicant to make the necessary landscape improvements to the property.
So are those requirements in the conditions?
Yes.
Okay.
So the landscape improvements are, as well as the building improvements, are necessary to be completed prior to final map issuance by the city to ensure that all the proposed improvements are completed.
Okay, thank you. I have no further questions.
Jonathan, it looks like we've had in November, two in 17 and 18, the commission has given feedback to the applicant. It looks like they've made most of the improvements that are possible. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Alright. I will open it up to the public. Any speakers? There'll be a three-minute time limit on the presentations. I'll first call up Bob Winnens or Williams.
Bob Winnens, City planning architect and the applicant for the project. And I know you've got a few questions. And Jonathan's looking up a few of them. Regarding that one garage that's 21 and a half feet deep, at the time, one of the things that we have to do, we have to provide trash. We don't have a separate trash enclosure for all three units. Each unit has their own trash cans, so they're all in the garages. So Unit A originally had, that's why it's... that's why it's deeper, because in order to get the trash cans to fit in the garage, it's still got to be clear of that 20-foot depth. So originally, we had trash cans in the back. Since then, we have looked at rotating them under the staircase, if you look at the plans. But the applicant still thinks that would be the only unit that will not have trash cans within it, except for being outside. So that's why we kept the depth of the overall dimension of the garage to 21.6. But easily, I'm sure we could convince him, if you guys wanted to get that separation closer to that 10 feet compared to eight, that we could probably convince him to eliminate that as far as being trash enclosed in the garage. As regarding the overhead easements, they're primarily overhead lines. In fact, one of the conditions of the many that we have on this project is that all utilities we brought underground. So those overhead lines and everything, most of those, as far as easements, will disappear when we get all this construction, all the final map, and the same thing with the open space. That's all done at a final map that'll be reviewed by, at the end of the day, staff and the city attorney. Other than that, you have any questions for me?
So the, the track map then will be revised?
It won't be revised. It'll be, right now, it's a tentative track.
Right.
Ultimately, there'll be a final map. Within that final map, there'll be the other, the CCNRs will be drafted up. The open, the airspaces and all that will be drafted up once everything's been 100% nailed down and the final map's been approved.
Any other questions for Mr. Williams? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Blaine Jaclyn.
Hi. I just, I live across the street from, on Copper Lantern. And I just have two questions. One is, is it truly only going to be three units? Because right now, it's more than that. And, and make sure it's not going to be more than three units when it's complete. And my second question is, how is the maintenance going to be done on the property, you know, out into the future? I actually know somebody that bought a condo in a situation like this, and their HOA abandoned them because of, you know, not making enough money, I'm assuming. And then they were left to fend for themselves, which doesn't really work out. So that are, that's my two questions.
Okay. Have another speaker, Robert Deschault?
I live across the street on Copper Lantern and on the building. And I talked to my neighbor next door between the two of us, and he's in favor of everything since it looks like there's no height increase. We've got more parking. And a modern or more modern building would be agreeable to him. For my case, I, I like the parking to bedroom ratio. And I just have a question about the spacing between buildings. If the spacing is narrow, like some of the older buildings are, does this pose any kind of health or safety hazard? If it makes people just feel a little more crowded, you know, I, I think that's not significant compared to the benefits.
Thank you. Have no other speakers, then I'll close public comments. And open it up for commissioner discussion.
Chair Donner? I'd like to make some comments. To the, to the speakers that came and posed questions, this isn't necessarily like a question-and-answer session. So questions can be directed to staff. And they'd be happy to answer your questions as long as you want to ask them. But we, we don't necessarily go back and forth and answer your questions. So I just wanted to address you. We heard you, but, but we don't do that. Regarding the project, as Chair Donner mentioned, we've seen this project a couple times and, and as I recall, both times before, we didn't really like it because there was a lot of noncompliance. And the applicant seems to have done a very lot to, to, you know, digest and respond to our comments and make the project as compliant as possible, which I really appreciate. That being said, I would recommend that, that this commission requests a continuance of the item. The reason being is that the tentative map as proposed, to me, is illegible. And that's kind, putting it kindly. I'm a registered civil engineer, and I can't tell what the heck is going on with it. So I don't know if they need to, you know, make multiple sheets or declutter it or whatever, but there's a ton of line work that's completely illegible. And I, for one, will not be voting on something that I don't understand or can't read. So I will, I will, at the appropriate time, make a motion for a continuance to give the applicant a chance to clarify and clean up the tentative map.
Do we have any other comments? Mr. Murphy? I, I am really favorably impressed with the, the work that's been done and being proposed to be done. I think it's going to be a dramatic improvement. But I also will support Commissioner McCann's concerns regarding the tentative map. And he's more qualified to, to read that and understand it than, than, than I am. So I will also agree to, to set this aside until that's resolved. Any other comments? Do you hear a motion?
So just to be clear, if there's going to be a motion to continue the item, we need to set a date certain for the next hearing. So I've gone through and I pulled up a list of our next meetings. We have first, December 9th. I'm not sure if that's going to be enough time to get the plans detailed or not. December 13th, I think we're looking at canceling that meeting, though. So the next available meeting would be either January 13th or January 27th.
I guess the question is how much time is, is appropriate for the for the applicant?
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
No, I just said, the, the question is, when can the applicant be ready? So I think that's, that question is going to be open for the applicant. I don't think we can set it without having, having some feedback from them.
Okay. So, so if we continue, we continue to a date certain, and we have to pick a date. If not, we can just table the item. And then whenever the applicant's ready, we can bring it back at whatever point in time. If that's January, if that's February, whatever that time is. The only difference is then that we have to renotice the public hearing. If we table the item, we won't have to renotice it if we continue it to a date certain.
Okay.
John, do you have a guesstimate as to how long the applicant would need to make those revisions? Okay, so
December 9th.
And to clarify, so they'll have it done sufficiently in advance time to make all the proper distributions and so forth?
The plans will need to be prepared by December 4th deadline.
With that being said, I move that we continue this item. Do I need to reread everything, Jennifer?
Let's just say to the regularly scheduled planning commission meeting of December 9th at 6 o'clock PM in the city council chambers.
Yes, that's my motion. Thank you.
Item two. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
You have to call for the vote? All right, that's passed, and thank you very much for the quality of the proposal. The next item, item three. The planning development department is going to present the Capistrano Beach Village Plan update.
We'll go ahead and wait for Commissioner Nelson to join us.
Okay.
Thank you, Chair Donner. Good evening, planning commissioners and members of the public. My name is Belinda Dynas, project manager, and I'm pleased to present to you the Capistrano Beach Village Plan update. This project is before you for preliminary review and an update to the project previously known as the Doheny Village Plan. In the past 30 years, there have been a number of attempts to develop a land use plan for the village. After the city received concerns from the community with the draft Form-based code in 2016, it was crucial to listen and learn from the village residents, property owners, and business owners. Beginning in October 2017, village stakeholders and city staff collaborated to inform, consult, involve, and empower community members in the visioning and land use planning process. Together, we shared about the area's deep history, and we evaluated opportunities and constraints associated with planning for the future of the village. Through this reengagement process, it became evident that the public policy with vision and regulations could not be successful without a solid foundation of this neighborhood's history and culture. In March 2018, the city council adopted these guiding principles for the village, the historical downtown of Capistrano Beach. The following principles developed by the community have served as the baseline for land use recommendations. That the planning process must be driven by the community. That we must adopt zoning that aligns and respects existing uses. Keep jobs and services in the community. Offer incentives for rehabilitation and new development. Improve connectivity and access from the village to the beach, across the creek, and Pacific Coast Highway. Invest in beautification. Consider options for traffic calming. Explore parking opportunities. And lastly, preserve character and enhance vitality by recognizing the village as an eclectic area with many longstanding industrial, commercial, and mixed-use businesses, as well as a variety of housing types. The city council was also directed to continue collaboration with stakeholders in a working group, which was formed in July 2018. The group was tasked with developing a draft zoning code update and beautification plan in a series of regular monthly meetings that were open to the public, noticed on the city's calendar, and publicized on social media. During these meetings, stakeholders brought forth their analysis of site conditions and provided recommendations of revisions to the city's existing zoning code. This timeline shows the working group's completed tasks from creating an action plan, light item reviews of land uses and development standards, and consideration of definitions and changes related to parking and residential density. After over a year of input, the city staff drafted the zoning code update and capital improvement list attached in your staff report. It is important to note that the incorporation of public input into these draft documents has been the foundation at every step of this entire process. The draft zoning code update proposes a new chapter in the Dana Point zoning code called the Capistrano Beach Village Districts. The proposed chapter is similar in format to other zoning districts throughout the city, but these standards are unique and only applicable to the village. The draft chat, the draft chapter proposes to legalize existing nonconforming uses and modifies development standards to meet the existing pattern of development, which had been previously allowed under county jurisdiction. As a result, these changes will likely spur small and large-scale redevelopment in the area. The draft zoning map establishes three new zoning districts. In purple is the village commercial industrial, which would allow mixed-use light industrial and commercial uses, where industrial uses had not been allowed since the adoption of the Dana Point zoning code 30 years ago, but have existence, existed since county jurisdiction. In red is village Main Street, which includes properties that front Doheny Park Road. There are some existing properties with residential on upper floors, and so the intent is to allow mixed use rather than the existing zoning standards for big-box retail. In brown is village commercial residential, which would allow horizontal mixed use, meaning that there could be commercial or residential uses allowed within this area. Currently, residential uses are only allowed as an accessory to primary commercial or vertical mixed use. Existing residential properties wanting to improve and expand are limited because of their nonconforming status. At present, there are no changes proposed to the community facilities and recreation zoning districts. However, the city recognizes that Capistrano Unified School District is seeking to submit an application for a specific planned area at the bus yard site. This timeline illustrates the next steps in the zoning code update process. Next month, city staff will request that the city council reinitiate the environmental review process. It is anticipated that environmental impact report will take at least nine months before the project returns to the planning commission for review and city council for review and approval. Following city council, we will then submit to the California Coastal Commission for a local coastal plan amendment. The working group has also developed a draft capital improvement list, which identifies priority projects for improving connectivity, beautification, traffic calming, and public parking. The group has formed a village beautification committee to work on short-term projects to initiate by early 2020. Community members have presented concepts for potential public spaces and industrial-inspired cultural art. They identified locations of mural art and color to bring interest and dimension to the area. Members also provided conceptual renderings to highlight the neighborhood identity through signage and wall art. I'm grateful to each and every one of our community members who made it, who committed countless volunteer hours at every single one of our late-night meetings, one-on-one talks, and group walkabouts throughout the neighborhood. They were surveying sites, compiling research, writing development standards, crafting renderings, and sharing so many firsthand historical counts, all of which to highlight how important it is to preserve and enhance the village, the heart of Capistrano Beach. With that, staff recommends that the planning commission provide general feedback on the proposed project in a preliminary review and receive and file the update report. I would be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from the staff or from the commission to the staff?
Mr. Chairman, I have a few questions. So I think I understand. So basically, they, we've moved away from the Form-based code in response to the community?
Correct.
Okay. Do you know what the, off the top of your head, or do you have, do we have the, an idea of how many total dwelling units would come about if this plan was approved? And all the max densities were reached?
Sure. And so on page 14 of the staff report is an image, exhibit B, that depicts the proposed density for each of the areas in question. It would result in approximately 1,100 residential dwelling units in the area.
Okay, and that's max?
Correct.
Okay.
And that includes existing residential units that exist today.
Okay, perfect. And then, as it relates to the village residential component, the density is, is that a max density? It's not a minimum density, I would assume, right?
It is a maximum.
Okay. And I know you were talking about legalizing uses that are currently not legal. Is there a process outlined for those, or is it just automatic?
The village working group had gone through a process to identify whether or not they would be permitted by right or conditional uses. And so depending on the type of use, those determinations were made at, at the working group level.
Okay, but there's a process potentially so that everybody that's down there could effectively stay, whether it's by right or through some discretionary process?
Correct.
Okay. Few questions here. On page six, under the footnotes, there's a max, there's a maximum height greater than 35 feet, subject to subject to an approval of a site development permit. That can be greater than. Do we have a max limit or story limit on that? What would effectively be like a use permit?
Yes. So if you refer to page five in the development table chart under Section E for maximum height, there is a range for each of the zoning districts. And so for the commercial industrial, it could exceed the maximum height limit of thirty-five up to forty.
Okay, got it. So that range?
Correct.
Anything above the thirty-five would require that they go through that process?
Correct. So for the commercial residential, it could be up to fifty feet, and Main Street would be forty feet.
Great. And then on the Mellow Act, what is the required affordable? I know that there's a replacement requirement, or at least my understanding in the Mellow Act is you remove something, you have to put it back.
Correct.
What are the additional requirements for new residential?
There aren't. So the incentive that is being proposed before you is actually one that allows for additional density if affordable housing is provided.
Okay, so it's like the state density bonus provisions?
Correct.
Perfect. And then on the parking, on page seven, so there's a difference between single-family duplex and triplexes. And I guess the one concern or question I would have is if you refer to the multifamily standard within our code, it removes the ability to have it covered or uncovered. So is that intentional? So under this code, if you're in a single-family duplex or triplex, you can do uncovered parking? But if you're multifamily, you can't?
Correct. The intent was to maintain the city's current code for multifamily residential parking.
Okay, so there's an intent there. Got it. Okay. And then, let's see if anything else. The community facility, so the, you asked the Capistrano Unified District. Is there a what-if scenario? So let's assume for a minute that whatever they're doing falls apart? The plan would be just to leave it as is?
Correct. There is language on page eleven that speaks to that. If the specific plan does not receive approval, that the existing standards for the recreation zone and the community facility zone will remain.
Okay. And that was the wish of the community working group?
Correct.
Okay. I think that is it for me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. My first comment is I'd like to thank all those, most especially the residents and business owners that have been involved in the in the grinding and long-suffering process to get to this point. I know it's been, you know, a big burden and a lot of effort and thought and work put in, and I really appreciate those that have stepped up to serve their community and hopefully make Doheny Village, or Capistrano Beach Village now, a great and evolving place. This talks about beautification plan. I don't see anything whatsoever in here about beautification plan unless Supporting Document Number Two is that beautification plan. Is that it?
Correct. The supporting document with regard to the priority project list refers to the working group's identification of capital improvements, which includes beautification.
Okay. I guess it'd be my recommendation that was kind of more properly explained and defined as to what that is and what that means, or what the goal of that is. There's a few distinctions in the language. One talks about for parcel sizes over ten acres. Is there, how big is the Mobile Home Park?
Mobile Home Park, in its entirety, is about thirteen point three acres.
Okay, so really, that's probably the only place that realistically could get that zoning?
Correct.
Okay. Why is there a difference in density south of Victoria?
The working group identified that special consideration be given to properties immediately adjacent to commercial industrial uses. And so in order to minimize the potential impacts between residential and industrial, that we would limit the number of units for properties south of Victoria on the west side. And so there are existing residential units, for example, above Pepe's, that exist today. And so we wanted to make sure that those units were considered legal and conforming to the code.
Okay. Thank you. Regarding uses, in the table on page four, storage yard uses permitted in the industrial. We had an issue several years ago regarding RV storage and a boat storage lot. I don't know if you were involved in that one?
I was.
And there was a lot of passion at that time about not allowing RV storage because of the complete lack of boat storage there is in the whole region. So was it discussed and considered to specifically exclude RVs and automobile storage?
It was not. It was identified by the group to legalize RV storage as permitted by right, as it is in the industrial zone, our current industrial zone, which would be the South Coast Water District property across the creek.
Okay. On the table on page five, you went through the height variance issues on line E. I was wondering, what's the range mean? Can you explain that down in like H? You know, there's a variable setback from zero to three feet. How do you know which is which?
So there are existing properties that currently have a zero setback, meaning they are built upon the property line. However, if an applicant chooses to develop a property with a setback, the minimum setback requirement would be three feet, subject to building code requirements.
Okay, so it's an existing versus new condition?
Correct.
So is that footnoted or defined or described anywhere?
We can add clarifying language to make those distinctions. Future properties will also be allowed to build to the zero setback as well.
Okay, I don't understand, because I thought you said that new construction had to be three feet?
If they choose to provide a setback from the property line. A minimum.
So it's either zero or three, but you can't do two or one?
Correct.
Okay, got it. Yeah, piggybacking on Commissioner Nelson's comment, you know, I personally am not familiar with the requirements or bonuses associated with the Mellow Act, so yeah, I would recommend that more information was made available regarding that, what impact that is.
Absolutely. Understood.
On page eight, C2, talks about outdoor storage of materials shall be adequately screened with solid fencing or walls. And I'm wondering what height issues there are related to that, because, for example, I'm thinking about granol lumber, and you're saying, hey, you would need to screen that. So now are we going to have twenty-foot walls and fences? Well, normally, walls and fences have like a six or eight-foot cap on height.
So the storage yard uses is specifically for properties with a primary use as storage. For example, the granol lumber in question is considered a building materials and sales use is their primary, and so they wouldn't be subject to the requirements for storage yard uses in particular.
Okay, well, my question still remains. If someone can go up to thirty-five feet high and have storage, then can they have a thirty-five-foot fence to screen that and to be in compliance with this?
Potentially, yes.
Okay. Okay, that's all my questions. Thank you.
So Belinda, I just have a couple of questions. Scott covered a couple of them with respect to the storage yard issues. So as it relates to the land uses, is there anything that will define these then for anyone as to what it actually includes or does not include?
For storage yard uses in particular?
For that one, are a couple like construction and maintenance services uses, or some that are just very general as to not understanding what it might include?
Sure. So the uses provided in the table on page three and four of the code section, the majority of the uses are identified in the definition section of the zoning code itself. And so those specific definitions, you can turn to Chapter nine, point, I believe it's seven-five, where it refers to definitions of land uses. There are specific definitions for uses that are customized for the village plan. And so those definitions of use are on page two, under C, and one, two, three. Those are related to artisan manufacturing, marine manufacturing, and metal fabrication uses, all of which have been defined specifically for the village.
Okay, I'll take a look at the zoning code that you referenced. And then, is there any background on why it was decided to change from the Doheny Village to the Capistrano Beach Village?
The community members in particular, the Doheny Village Merchants Association, made it very clear from the very beginning that they weren't sure where Doheny Village even came from. And so historically, this had always been Capistrano Beach, in that the village was how it was always referenced. I see nods in the audience confirming that. And so we wanted to, because Doheny Village, you know, we couldn't quite pinpoint where that came from. And I think it stems from the city originally trying to develop specific plans. We sought to modify that, to correct that history and for this area.
All right. And to that, just for reference, on page ten of your update, under General Plan Amendment, it talks about adoption of the Doheny Village update. So there's one place that you didn't catch it.
I will make note. Thank you.
That's all I had. Thank you.
The people that worked on this, I also would add my thanks. I know that this has been a long process, having sat in a couple of them. And I appreciate the effort that you've put forth also. I think this is something that is long overdue, and hopefully we'll move it forward. With the beautification process and the priorities, that's a recommendation to the city because the funding has not been, it's not set aside specifically?
Correct.
Okay. I have no other questions, and so we're not voting, so thank you very much for...
We're going to have to ask if the public has any comments?
Sure.
But other than that, we're done.
Okay. Oyanip?
Good evening. I would just like to first one, anyway. I don't believe you have anything important to say, so I attended their meeting twice. The first time, I think I was just lucky that I stumbled upon this meeting. Actually, I've been wondering the whole time, for probably years, what's happening. So anyway, I just happened to be there, and it was really good. So thank you for adding me to your private meeting list. I enjoyed it both times. I think this is a great energy. I hope everyone in the community can watch how they do the work. And this would be a great inspiration for a general plan update. Thank you.
Okay. Teresa Bar?
Teresa Bolvaya.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Teresa Bolvaya, and I live in Dana Point, and thank you for your time. I just wanted to say that this has been a very long process for us, but we enjoyed who we worked with. Belinda has done an outstanding job. I cannot tell you how hard she has worked with us, and she has stayed late meetings, and I've worked during the day. So coming to these meetings late at night, but she's always there, and she has been a wonderful hostess. And she has been very informative for us, because we, this is something that the group of people who own property and work down there don't understand this. All we knew is that the city was wanting to change things down there, and they were not happy with that, because this is a way of life for them. This is their employment. This is how they make money. So Belinda has helped us through this process, and I just wanted to give her a round of applause because she has done an outstanding job, and we appreciate you guys willing to listen to us and take our feedback in regards to this. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Go ahead, Eric.
I do have a few comments, so I had questions, but I did want to make a couple of comments. I think, you know, I remember when we kicked off the Form Based Code process, and there was a lot of concerns when that started. And, you know, what I remember is there were a lot of property owners and members of the community that lived or worked in the Capistrano Beach area that were concerned. And I think this is a really good example of the city listening and the city leading a process that had some really good community engagement. Obviously, the plans changed quite a bit from back then, and it changed with support of the community, and I think that is something that we shouldn't be missed here. It's a great learning moment for us as commissioners and as a city. You know, I'm in full support of something that has community support, within reason, obviously. And, you know, we still have some work to do, or you still have a lot of work to do. But it looks like you've done a great job bringing everybody together, talking through the issues, and coming up with a plan that's not only appropriate for the area, but something that has broad support from the owners and the residents. So this is just really well done, and I didn't want that to pass by without acknowledging your work and the work of the community, and putting something in front of us that we get to comment on. It probably speaks a little bit to your transparency comment earlier tonight. And so if we can do more of this, we'll be a better city for it. So thank you.
When I was new to the commission, we were struggling with storage of vehicles that were recreational and then boats. And I said, it makes no sense to me that we have a railroad track backing up, and we can't use that for storage because our zoning didn't allow it. So, and I said, why can't we change it? And we can, it just takes a while. And I appreciate the perseverance of everybody. So if anything else, I will then move on to our next agenda item. Old business, none. New business, none. Staff reports? We have a staff report?
It looks like there's a written staff report that's in your agenda relating to the Zone Text Workshop that we had last week.
The next, I guess this will be revisited then in January. In the meantime, we may individually meet with Kelly to provide some feedback. We have any commissioner comments? The Ritz Hotel put on a terrific event on Sunday evening with, they collected tremendous amount of toys and canned goods and raised money for the autistic surfer's healing. And they had, Santa showed up in his widdy, and they had snow sprayed throughout the crowd. So it was a huge turnout, and it was a great job with the community and with the hotel. That's the only comment I have, and with no further comments, I will look forward to our next meeting on December the ninth, around six o'clock here. Thank you. Meeting adjourned. Meeting's adjourned.